Well, maybe you ought to say something to the mayor.
Hey, Tim.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Jane's there. Nancy Meadows there. Thomas J. Cohen, Jane Denoble. Don Greenberg. Thank you, Jane. Big Mike, who's that?
Okay, Mr. Benel. Actually, can we start? We start with the Pledge of Allegiance. My apologies.
Yeah, yeah. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which stands. One nation.
Nation.
Under God. And there is well.
With liberty.
And justice.
I wish to announce that the 48-hour notice as required under the Open Public Meetings Act was emailed to the Asbury Park Press, the CoStar, and the New Coaster on December the 16th of 2021, that a copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and that a copy has been filed with the borough clerk. Mr. Benel. Absent. Mr. Gubatose.
Here.
Mr. Sexsmith.
Here.
Mr. Weber. Absent. Mayor Fox.
Here. Okay, we'll now move to the public comment on agenda items. A five-minute limit on public comments on this agenda. Mr. Cohen.
Thomas J. Cohen, 612 Third Avenue. I like to put my objections on the record in terms of this meeting today. First of all, the clerk's comments are incorrect as, according to the Asbury Park Press, this was published yesterday, February 2nd, which does not meet the 48-hour requirement of the Open Public Meetings Act. That's my first objection. My second is that this meeting doesn't meet the requirements for a meeting under NJSA 10:4-8D as this is not an emergency meeting. The emergency meeting exception was not utilized in the notice or in the resolution that's been presented to the town, to the residents of the town. There's no urgency to this matter. There is no super importance to this matter. This matter, you know, could reasonably be done next week. There's no there's no unforeseen reason to have the meeting. No one's losing water service. No one's losing sewer service. No one's at risk of health. Those are the reasons for having an emergency meeting like this. This only continues a pattern of Open Public Meetings Act abuse by this mayor, and I find it very disturbing. What you're proposing to do tonight is not a cure for your previous abuses on October 12th and November 9th. There's absolutely no reason that this meeting tonight that you're proposing couldn't be done in public as it should have on October 12th and November 9th. So I'm happy to have my objections on the record as this is just a further waste of municipal assets in attempt to circumvent the Open Public Meetings Act requirements of the state of New Jersey. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Cohen. And this is not an emergency meeting. It's a special meeting. So I just wanted to correct your language on that.
Well, you would need to use the emergency meeting exception to have this meeting because you did not make proper notice, sir. The notice is in the Asbury Park Press yesterday.
That is not the only notice that we provide to conform to that requirement, but I'll let Mr. Cannon talk to it.
Great.
Well, Mr. Cohen's very much aware of the circumstances insofar as this meeting was called in response to his lawsuit on this issue from the October and November meetings. I respect Mr. Cohen's arguments as a public advocate. So it's really not up to me or Mr. Cohen to decide what's right or wrong. It'll be up to the judge and the law that he currently has pending against the town. And we'll go from there. I mean, this is when we could schedule it to get the other parties involved. So it's not an emergency meeting. It's a special meeting pursuant to Code 5.8. It could call be the call by the mayor at any time. And we'll proceed under those circumstances. And your objections are noted, Mr. Cohen. And as you know, I very much respect you as a public advocate. And, you know, you might be right. I might be right. And we'll figure it out. That's the other of us at the judge, right?
Yes, sir. And I do do much better in a separate jurisdiction, and I appreciate those comments. And I appreciate getting my comments on the record.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Greenberg.
Greenberg, a three or two-part place to have. I have an objection that I don't, not to the technicality of it. But before we decide to negotiate with somebody about selling a water system or selling a piece of town property, I mean, shouldn't we have a public discussion of whether we even want to do that? I think your meetings with these people are premature. To have meetings that aren't open to the public is wrong, especially if the public hasn't decided whether we want to do what you're trying to do, sell the property or sell the water system. These should be open meetings, open to the public, not held behind closed doors. There should be more transparency. That's what I have to say.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Greenberg. This is not in any way a negotiation with any of these entities. These were informational meetings that were held for no other reason than information. There were, there is zero negotiation going on or any decisions have been even approached at this point. So.
Well, then why can't they be public? If there's no decisions being made, no contractual negotiations being made, there is absolutely no reason to hold these meetings behind closed doors.
Yeah, okay, well.
Your response to that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I'll just take your.
I can take that one, Mayor. Mr. Greenberg.
Thanks, Greg.
Played English. Mr. Cohen has put us in a very difficult legal position as the result of the mislabeling of the October and November agendas. And this is what we have to do to address his lawsuit. Whether it's right or wrong is honestly a total gray area, as I just acknowledged with Mr. Cohen. There is no black letter rule on how this is really done. There's case law and Mr. Cohen has cited, there's case law I've cited. And so this is really a procedural meeting to properly label the agendas from October and November and then see how, if a judge thinks Mr. Cohen's right or whether the borough's right or whether it's somewhere in between.
Well, I mean, couldn't you legitimately have those meetings in the public venue? I mean, what would be the difference? You're having a meeting to cure his lawsuit. Why not have it in public? Why does it have to be behind closed doors?
Well, there's different, well, number one, the mayor's talking in the present tense. When we held these meetings before, they were, they were the beginnings of potential contract negotiations on these potential matters, right? And they never, nothing ever happened after those meetings, right? So it's not necessarily a completely live issue here. This is a procedural meeting. In long story short, if we have the, long legal story short, we hold the meeting in public, Mr. Cohen gets awarded thousands of dollars in attorney's fees because it's an acknowledgement of the mislabeling of the meetings that he's arguing from the original lawsuit. You can look this up in the lawsuits going on. This meeting is essentially ceremony for purposes of the Open Public Meetings Act to label the agendas correctly and hold these meetings correctly. They're not, you know, unfortunately, this is what we're forced to do or we have to concede Mr. Cohen's lawsuit and take his attorney thousands of dollars in attorney's fees. So I'm sorry that you all logged on here and to come to something that maybe you thought it was tonight, but this is really a redo of the prior meetings that ultimately went nowhere so that we can, we find ourselves between two lawsuits. Mr. Cohen has filed against the town. And so no matter what we do here, Mr. Cohen has set it up so that he'll probably win one of them. And we're doing our best to try to mitigate what's going on here. So.
Basically, you're saying that you're just gonna, you're gonna have these two meetings. They're both gonna last like five minutes and then.
No, the discussions are gonna go along the same exact track that they went last time in October and November, and we're gonna hear the exact same thing we heard last time, but this time it will be done procedurally correctly, at least the case that I'm defending by Mr. Cohen. But in the other case, he's taking it out a different legal position. That would mean that if I held these meetings in public here tonight, I'd be conceding the Oprah Council's lawsuit against Mr. Cohen. So this is very, Mr. Cohen's lawyer is very good, and he has put the borough in a procedural box where we really have no options, even though we really don't have much to go forward with, but either these entities, we have to hold this meeting to legal purposes. And like I said, all the people logged on tonight, you guys know on the borough attorney, a lot of you log here all the time. Like I said, I don't know if Mr. Cohen's right. I don't know if the borough's right. It's my duty to make sure that the borough's protected the best it can be. And I can assure you that if the judge tells us to do something or Mr. Cohen has made points that we've done something wrong, we're gonna correct it and do it correct going forward. And that's all I can promise you guys as the residents of the town, right?
Fair enough. And I would just like the mayor to answer, you know, why wasn't the public consulted before these meetings were placed? As to if the public wants to do, sell the water system or sell 705 Greenwood, you know, I think that's a decision that should have been made prior to having any meetings with anybody. So I'd like to know from the mayor.
The answer to that question, the answer to that question is because me and the administrator put them in executive session originally because we don't know what these people are gonna say, right? We don't know if they're gonna come in and make a.
No, I think you're missing the point, Greg. Greg, you're missing the point. Before you even scheduled the meeting, why wasn't the public asked, do you want to sell this property? Do we think this is a good idea? Do we want to sell the water system? Do we think this is a good idea? Why wasn't that discussed at a council meeting?
Because we never, we never got to that point. We never got to that point. There's not sufficient consensus on the governing body. Like, we heard their original pitch. We, the administrator, I thought it was best to hear it in private because we didn't know what they were gonna say. And if there was any consensus on the governing body to move forward, I mean, this governing body is the, are the kings of workshops. So we would have had a workshop after that.
I think we're passing in the wind here. What I'm saying is the cart was put before the horse. The public should have been asked, should we look into selling 705? Should we even entertain the idea? You know, should we entertain the idea of selling the water system before anybody was ever talked to on the other end of it?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Greenberg, if you think that.
It's not a legal thing.
Yeah, I'll answer that question, Mr. Greenberg. The idea of utilizing the Evergreen Avenue DPW yard for something else is not new news. It's been talked about for over probably a couple of years. So this is not a secret fact that we've, we've said, and I've said publicly a number of times in council meetings and out of council meetings that we're a .75 mile square town that has two DPW yards. Does that make sense? So that's not new news or a secret. So saying that it hasn't been in the public eye is just, is not factual. The second thing is we did a strategic plan starting in 2019, and in that strategic plan, one of the things that was reviewed was infrastructure. Actually, one of the people on the call here is Mr. Shashia. He was part of that strategic plan group. One of the things that was discussed was assessing our sewer system. So that's not new news or secret either. So to say either one of those things is secret or we're, you know, this is the first time you're hearing it. That's unfortunate. It's the first time you're hearing it. But this has been conversation that's been going on for a couple of years now. So.
What was the conversation? Did the conversation include selling 705 Greenwood to a developer?
Mr. Greenberg. Yeah. Mr. Greenberg, this is Kim. How are you this evening, sir?
How you doing? Nice talking to you the other day.
You too. Nice to see you.
Thanks. Thanks for getting that email, the text out. Appreciate that for the next meeting tonight.
So I just want to let you know that we, you schedule these things in executive session, these two items. They were scheduled because we were not sure what was being offered, if dollar numbers were gonna be said. We, the borough, did not have any plans, but it was a way for the council, mayor and council to hear what was being presented and how to move forward with informing the public. It was not to not inform the public, but as you're probably aware is that certain things should not be brought up if it's something that would be bid or sold or if there was a contract that would be offered, because if that's something you're gonna bring up and forward to everyone right in the beginning, other people wouldn't be able to bid on it. So we needed to see what was being offered. There were no decisions made, no actions were made. It was just a sitting, listening session, and then, sorry, and that we just needed to hear what was being offered even.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
Yeah, I'd just like to interrupt first.
It's not the sale of water, it's the sewer. We were discussing. And not the true sale of it, what programs are offered to municipalities.
But the 705 would be the sale of the property, right?
It wasn't exactly that we spoke about sale. It was the development options that could take place.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Appreciate it.
If I could just interrupt for a second, Councilman Weber joined at 5:40.
Thanks. Yeah, we can see him there. Yeah. Mr. Denoble.
Good evening. Jane Denoble, 612 Third Avenue. A quick question for Greg Cannon. I see this evening and other meetings as well, Mayor Fox is getting and reading text messages. I'm wondering if this is violation of the sunshine law?
Not necessarily.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Meadows.
Yes, Nancy Meadow, Ocean Park Condominiums. I want to echo what Mr. Cohen and Mr. Greenberg said, despite the verbose answers provided by some on the panel. I think the points that are being made regarding these issues and others in the past, recent past, and coming up in the future is that the public feels it is excluded. And the public is what this is all about. It's not your personal preferences. It's not your personal friends. It's not, should we spend money looking into something? That's our money. And when we are shut out for whatever true or other reasons, it doesn't seem right. Whether it's legal or not, that's a whole other ballgame. But quite honestly, my issues are what is right. And I've said that to you guys before. And all of this behavior and all of this behind closed doors, all it does is prove that this administration is the enemy and not the partner. And I find this very sad, given the size, as the mayor himself stated, was the town. It just echoes so much else that is prevalent in our society today, and I think it is disgusting and vile that it is allowed to perpetrate into our little town. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. I don't think there's anybody else with questions on the agenda, so I will make a.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just reviewed the legal notices for this meeting from the clerk, and they are issued 48 hours in advance. So we're just wasting our time doing this again. They did, the newspaper didn't run them till yesterday at the earliest. And Mr. Cohen is correct. You don't need to be a judge to figure that out.
Yeah, so we submitted it. It wasn't published in time, so I would suggest that we make a motion to close the meeting.
Yeah, I'm not gonna waste these third parties' time for a second.
Was it not on the online Asbury Park Press?
I'm looking at the affidavits of publication. The earliest it was published, Mr. Cohen's writing just that. They were sent last week, but they weren't published till yesterday. So.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Okay.
You're right. You know, you know, you know, you're right. You're right. And you know, I called the balls and strikes to ask you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Benel just joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
It's time for the end.
So what do we need to do here, Mr. Cannon? Make a motion to join the meeting?
Yeah, adjourn and renotice. Yeah, adjourn and renotice.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting and renotice.
Second.
Mr. Benel? Randy?
You're muted, Randy.
I was under the impression I'm going to abstain because I have no idea what you guys are talking about.
Okay.
We, Randy, long story short, we got here. Mr. Cohen pointed out that the notices were, didn't reach the newspaper, actually published till yesterday. That's why he was referencing an emergency meeting, which is a 24-hour meeting. Special meeting can be called, but it has to be OPMA-wise 48 hours in advance. I got the affidavit from the clerk in the meantime and reviewed them, and that's, that's accurate. So we don't have proper notice for this meeting. We're not gonna bring these people in a room, have the people that told us last time, and then waste their time for a third time. So we might as well just overhaul now.
Okay, so the vote is to cancel the meeting?
Close the meeting. Just adjourn. It's good to see you. Nice to see you.
I vote yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Sexsmith?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, and thank you to people that are paying attention.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we will close the meeting.
Hi, all. Thank you.
Good night.